Good evening, members, members of the public. And can I move first of all to the appointment of Vice Chairman for the year? And the Vice Chairman is councillor Tom Martin. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And apologies for absence, Mrs McQuillan.
Thank you, Chair. And apologies have been received from councillor Bryan Adams.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Thank you. I've received a declaration of interest from councillor Potts as a member of Farnham Town Council in advance of the meeting.
Members, are there any other declarations of interest? So, we move to the next item on the agenda. Just for help and assistance in terms of how we'll manage this agenda, because it is, as you can see, the subject of a very complex, detailed and lengthy report, much of which is in open, but there are some parts of the sensitive areas, the commercial confidentiality and legal aspects, that are in exempt. What I would propose we do is that we open up and we cover as much as possible across this report in open. The last thing I want for people and guests in the public gallery this evening is for them to have to keep coming in and out of the council chamber. So, we will start in open. If you have questions or statements that you wish to make, which are relevant to the exempt parts of the agenda, then we will take those separately so that we have one exempt section. I hope you're all in agreement with that. And then we'll come back in, the public can then come back in if necessary. I'm pretty sure that we will need, at some stage, I'm sure, to go into exempt. So, moving to the report before you this evening, you've got detailed papers, and as I said, they're very lengthy papers, but they are complex, and the matter before us is complex. This is our opportunity as councillors to deliver a scheme, a regeneration scheme in Farnham, which has been a number of years in the making, a scheme that will really transform and regenerate a somewhat rundown area of Farnham. I myself have lived in Farnham for about 20 years now, and have seen this area, passed it at times even before moving into Farnham. And I can see that we really do need to regenerate that area. And I know that, and I'm sure that many of you here tonight would agree with that. I became a councillor because I wanted to be able to make a difference, not just in my own town, but in the borough in which I live. And I'm pretty sure that that's why a lot of us became councillors, because that's what we want to do. We want to deliver for our residents. And this scheme gives us that opportunity to deliver for the residents of Farnham, but also with a number of the benefits that it delivers, in terms of the income stream, which you will have seen in the exempt papers, and the financial benefits, it actually allows us a much wider benefit for the whole of our borough of Waverley. So, should we really take the decision and agree the recommendations before us tonight? I believe that we should. Working with senior officers during the past few months, I and they have ensured that we've taken specialist and comprehensive external and internal legal advice from lawyers and leading council to manage and mitigate any risks of legal challenge. We've engaged GVA, as many of you will have seen from the papers, an internationally renowned firm of valuers, who have forensically and very, very carefully challenged and tested all aspects of the financial appraisal that is before you tonight. They have fully endorsed the financial proposal. We've taken advice from our external auditors, Grant Thornton, in terms of process and making sure that the process followed is absolutely legally and, from an audit perspective, absolutely sound. Now, the papers before you detail very, very carefully and in great detail the community and the business benefits. And let's be clear, there is a risk that is mentioned, but that is a balanced and calculated risk that we are taking. And I've asked Mr Bainbridge to speak in a minute, just in a little more detail on that. Colleagues, I feel that we're privileged tonight to be able to make a decision that brings to an end some 14, 15 years of uncertainty, that will finally deliver this regeneration scheme for Farnham, for its residents and for our borough. It will bring jobs, over 400 jobs to the town, it will bring homes for young professionals, those starting on the housing ladder, and those who wish to downsize. It'll bring restaurants, cinema, economic growth, significant income stream, as we've already talked, and improved retail, a new town square and gardens. Significant improvements, significant benefits to the town of Farnham. And I for one am fully supportive of this. I'd now like to pass to Mr Clark, our Finance Director, who's just going to talk to you a little bit more about the finances in relation to the scheme, this we can, I think we can hopefully at this stage keep in open, but just to talk about the actual business benefits of the scheme. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Leader, as you said, there are some figures in the exempt section of this report, but we have put the main financial headlines in the open section of the report, and it's very important that we do, in terms of transparency and openness of the decision that members will be considering this evening. Leader, the finances are one aspect and an important aspect of this scheme and delivering this scheme. They're not the only one, and the report covers all of the other aspects as well. But I will just focus on finances and the property transaction for now, and I will be careful just to refer to information that is in the open report. Leader, as you said, this is about, this report is about delivering a longstanding objective of the council to regenerate, and a number of things affect the value of a property holding. And what you actually do with it affects the value. So, if you go for an open market sale, put as much as you can on there to maximise your upfront receipt, that is one option. But the council chose some time ago to regenerate, and the valuation was always going to reflect that objective, because quite a lot of the site isn't actually developed up, it's there for community use, and that affects the value. What also affects the value is the type of disposal. This isn't a disposal of the freehold, the council will retain the freehold of the site, and there will be a long lease period with the commercial funder, which we're very pleased is going to be Surrey County Council, because they have a very strong financial covenant, and they have objectives, regeneration objectives that align to the councils. So, we're very pleased that the long-term relationship that we will have as leaseholder and lessy will be with Surrey County Council. So, in terms of the value, as the report says, there was an anticipated capital receipt, upfront payment, and that is one part of the package. Now, the market has changed significantly, as have construction costs, since that figure was estimated in 2009, when the Development Agreement, the latest version of the Development Agreement, was approved by the council with Chris Nicholson. Going through a very long recession, coming out the other side, confidence and values in the commercial property market were significantly affected by the recession, and indeed the willingness of funders to fund commercial schemes. And only in the last couple of years has that confidence started to grow again, and we've worked closely with GVA and, of course, with Chris Nicholson as well, to come forward with a proposal that is now deliverable. Clearly, it's for members to decide whether they want to proceed on these terms or not. But one really important part of the financials is, as you referred to, Leader, the GVA, their report, which concluded, paragraph 17 of the report on page 10, that the proposed land payment to the council is appropriate. And this came at the end of their best consideration report, and we have a statutory duty with property transactions of this nature and of this size to ensure that the council receives best consideration. And that does not mean the most you could sell on the open market for a piece of real estate, it means the specific scheme that's being proposed, with the planning permission, with the Development Agreement and the constraints that that puts on all parties. What is the appropriate value of that scheme in today's market? That is the question that we have to ask, and we have to get an appropriately qualified firm of experts to do that independently for us. And as you say, Leader, that took senior staff at GVA about three or four weeks to assess, and their conclusion is that, paragraph 17 of the open report, so not only is the land payment appropriate, but also they concluded that the profit that the developer is entitled to receive is materially less than would be considered acceptable by other developers. So, two important conclusions that gave us some comfort in preparing this report for you. Had the conclusion been different from that, and the GVA concluded that the land payment wasn't appropriate, and that we were likely to sell short of the true value, we would not be sat here tonight with a report written in these terms. But that is not the case. So, Leader, some of the other aspects, it's not all about the upfront capital payment. The council decided to retain the leasehold partly so that it could keep a commercial rent coming to the council, and it's really important to our budget and therefore to our council taxpayers that this is a long-term investment that has a financial gain each year to support our budget. And that is what is happening with the proposal. So, whilst the capital payment is not as high as we had anticipated before the recession, the revenue gain is actually much stronger now, and we've got a stronger funder that is willing to work with us on aspects like the car park and the open space. So, we're in a very good position in a number of other aspects, as well as just the upfront payment. So, the report refers to an upfront payment of 3.19 million. On top of that, there's another 1.5 million in other contributions, there's a significant contribution from the developer towards the Memorial Hall development and other payments. And the capitalised value of the rental, as I've put into the report here, according to GVA's valuation, is 5.6 million. So, by the time you pull together the capital package, it's a substantial, it's a substantial capital package, as well as a revenue gain to the council and therefore to the council's council taxpayers of between 700 and 900,000, once the scheme is complete, for the foreseeable future. So, Leader, that's pretty much all I was going to say, just a few headlines, but very important ones. And as I say, the finances are a very important aspect of this, and just wanted to make sure members were comfortable with the detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Clark. I know some members have got queries, slightly more detailed queries, that they may wish to raise in exempt, and as I say, we will come to that later, but hopefully that gives a slightly better view on the financial aspect. In terms of the legal aspect, again, I said Mr Bainbridge, the borough solicitor, would again do a short summary for you, and I'll hand over to Mr Bainbridge. And then again, if you've got more detailed questions that we need to cover in exempt later, that's fine, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I won't go on at length, because you don't want to hear me go on at length. As you've said, we have taken external legal advice on a number of issues, and some of that advice has come from leading council. The advice is summarised in the report, in the open section of the report, pages 14 onwards. There is then detailed legal advice within the exempt papers that are before you. That advice is legally privileged and confidential, and therefore it's in the exempt papers, it can't be disclosed to any third party. That advice is that the legal position is complex and not straightforward. If it were clear that to proceed were unlawful, officers would simply not be recommending approval of these changes. Now, we've also taken advice regarding the CPO and the timings of the execution, and you'll be aware that the CPO expires on the 19th of September this year.
Mr Bainbridge, sorry.
Yes, councillor Edwards.
Sorry to interrupt you, Chairman, but some of the residents can't hear what's being said. Could you speak nearer than the microphone, please? Thank you.
So, we've also taken advice regarding the CPO and the timing of that. You'll be aware that that expires in mid-September, the 19th of September, and we've discussed the timings with council and when we would need to execute the CPO by. So, the decision that you make tonight, and obviously the council will make later, must take account of all the advice that you've received. So, you need to be clear about your intentions, and you need to balance the risk against the benefits of this scheme, and you need to make the decision with your eyes open. And I'm happy to take any questions about the advice, but it's likely that those answers will be given in exempt session for the reasons that I've already said, and it may be that the detail of the questions needs to be asked in exempt session.
I think we'll take that as a summary, and we'll keep the detailed questions to exempt if we're agreed. Yeah. Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you for taking the question, Leader. I've actually arranged my questions so that they can certainly be asked under normal circumstances, and I think can be answered in the open session. Now, if that's not the case, quite happy that that bit of the answer isn't given till later, but to the extent we can, I'd like to try and ask and answer as many questions as possible with everybody present.
Thank you, councillor Ramsdale. In that, what we will do, as I say, is we will go through each person who meet, each councillor who's put their name down to speak, and if you have particular questions that are in open, we'll take those, that's absolutely fine. Okay. So, the first speaker that I have, and before I open this up to the executive, the first speaker is councillor Mulliner.
Thank you very much, Leader. My comments at this stage are going to be quite limited, but I would like to express my gratitude to Mr Clark for providing the comparison figures between 2009 and 2016. And although I think there's some uncertainty about what the original developer profit was, as I recall a figure of 18 million rather than 16.7 in the papers, what is clear from that is that both parties take a cash reduction in how much they make out of the scheme. And my comment is that, having read council's opinion, we have to keep firmly in mind the very substantial social benefits that this scheme would bring. In particular, with 430 new jobs, my estimate is an additional salary increment to Farnham would be between 6 and 7 million. So, when we're considering the balance of advantage in this scheme, that's something which should be given heavy consideration, because that money will largely be spent in Farnham. I may have some more questions in exempt, but at this stage, I'm happy to leave it there.
Thank you. We'll retain your name for exempt, and I'll move on. The next person who put their name down was councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Leader. My comment really has little to do with finance, but nevertheless, much to do with the whole project. I'm concerned about the constant complaints one hears about the proposed removal of the Redgrave Theatre. My husband and I moved to Godleming in July 1988 to work in Jumps Road Church, and made a point of attending pretty well every opening night at the Redgrave. We witnessed two incarnations of the theatre, and towards the end of its commercial life, were often part of a select audience numbering little more than a dozen or so. When I hear such protests, therefore, I have to ask myself where these people were when the theatre needed their support most. I know the theatre was built with the aid of public subscription. Indeed, Mike and I also contributed to the attempt to save it. However, Waverley was obliged to use taxpayers' money on several occasions to bail out the theatre, a situation which simply could not be allowed to continue. Having walked around the site on Saturday and had the proposal fully outlined to us, I have to admit to being impressed. I find the development very exciting. I'm sure it would greatly enhance and rejuvenate an otherwise neglected corner of Farnham, and would be an asset for the community as a whole. I wonder, though, whether it might be possible to have one of the cinema studios available as a flexible space, rather like the Borough Hall here or Cranly Arts Centre. This could possibly then be used for events like loud band gigs that would benefit from soundproofing, thus enabling the Maltings to be even more effective with its other theatrical works. Thank you very much, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Wheatley. Yes, as you say, there is a lot of concern about the Redgrave Theatre, and understandably so, and I think that needs to be balanced with the fact that sadly, it didn't succeed as a theatre. It lost about 1.3 million pounds of Waverley council taxpayers' money. And obviously, we now have a new proposal before us. We have real cinema who are coming in as the cinema provider, and they are an independent cinema provider, and part of their remit is that they are very much more of a boutique cinema, but also very much community focused. And members who were here last night hopefully saw some of the community works that they do, and they have already indicated through the developer that that will be something that they will be interested in doing, and they want to be involved in, in terms of the allocation of some of it for some of the cinema usage at times for community use, amateur dramatics and so forth. It's also worth remembering that in Farnham, we have the internationally renowned Farnham Maltings. And Farnham Maltings, last year, with an arts council grant and some grant from Waverley, refurbished their Great Hall. So, again, they have a much more bespoke, flexible theatre space. We also have places like Frencham Heights School, Weyden School, again, with dedicated theatre. So, Farnham is very much an arts, crafts and cultural town, and this actually, this scheme will enhance that. So, I'm confident that, yes, that will be delivered. Thank you.
Next councillor is councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Leader. I too wanted to deliver for the residents, and I think we need to address some of their concerns, and it's two in particular I'd like to raise now in this open session. The first one, I can see the benefits of the long-term income flow, and in the White Papers, it describes that as being between 700 and 900k sort of ongoing. And I like the fact that we eventually get the land back. But there's some key values there for the future. Can we be assured that there's absolutely no question that Crest, or indeed anyone else other than the council or the public, obtaining the freehold of the site? Some of the residents who've been worried about this have expressed to me that they understand the problem rose with Farnham Urban District Council and the Woolmead location of that nature. Shall I move on to my second question? Which is that, given the changing style of shopping, and that Farnham already has, at least on Saturday nights, a busy restaurant scene, I'm getting concerned, some residents, as to why we're not seeing a scheme with a majority of housing, including a large section of affordable or social housing, and remembering that as a local authority, we can borrow at 3% to fund that. So, those are the two areas of concerns I've been getting, and I wanted to raise to the executive at this meeting.
Thank you, councillor Ramsdale. To your first point on the income stream, which, as you say, is very beneficial, yes, moving on from that, the land, as Mr Clark said, is actually being granted to Surrey County Council under a head lease, 150-year lease, but it is under a lease, and Waverley retained the freehold. I know Mr Bainbridge has been at a number of legal meetings where a lot of that is happening in terms of their drawing up all the draft papers, and I'm sure that if you'd like him to reassure you on that, that he's happy to do so. Mr Bainbridge?
Yeah, every assurance why it's a leasehold disposal to Surrey, it's not a freehold disposal. I have seen mention of there being a freehold disposal, that's simply not the case, and that's not a change to how it was or has been under the Development Agreement throughout its life. It's always been envisaged as a leasehold or series of leasehold disposals for a long period, and that remains the position now, albeit that it will be a single head lease to Surrey County Council. I don't envisage a way in which somebody else would acquire the freehold to this land, unless the council chose to dispose of it as freehold at some future point in time, but that's not the intention here, never has been.
Does that clarify that question? Now, your second question was about, sort of really, and I know that I've had this raised by residents as well, the scheme is several years old, and is it really still the right scheme? I think, in a nutshell, is what you're saying. And I think a number of us have received similar comments and questions, and I know that the developer has gone away, and we've also looked at this question. And we are assured, and we can see from work done by, again, specialist retail experts and property consultants, that we have a scheme that is actually very flexible. We have a scheme that will deliver homes, it will deliver housing for our young professionals with the shared ownership that is now being offered. It will offer homes and apartments for those wishing to downsize, but what it will also offer, as I say, is a real opportunity to grow the early evening economy. And we can see strong anchor tenants who have been very keen to come into Farnham. We know that not everyone, especially a lot of our young people, always can or want to go out of the town and leave the town. It's really important that we keep people in the town. We want to really maximise the Farnham economy, and this gives us the opportunity to do that with the mix that is there, and it gives us the opportunity to really grow that early evening economy as well, with the mix that you're seeing. And what we have done, and you can see, is that there is quite a flexible amount of sort of what we call social leisure on offer there, in terms of the restaurant and the cinema and so forth. So, we feel it's the right mix, the developer feels it's the right mix. Nobody would be going ahead if this was not the right mix or the right scheme. You know, ultimately, we want to regenerate the town, and that's what's proposed. Thank you.
I have councillor MacLeod next.
Thank you, Leader. Before I go on to the main subject, I'd like to bring up two... Before I go on to the main subject, I'd like to bring up two smaller points. The first is that several members of the public have expressed considerable concern to me that there's no public speaking at the main council meeting this evening. Now, I do understand that this is against the rules of the council, but surely in such an important project, the biggest project that Waverley has ever done, the public should be heard. They are after all the most important stakeholders in all of this and I would have hoped that with your influence and the influence of the mayor and the chief officer, that could be considered. So I'll just leave that point with you. The second point I'd want to make before I get on to the main subject is that I asked the question of Chris Nicholson last night, Mr MacArthur, about why they're trying to get around the important planning condition of the scheme that all construction traffic should come through the town. They have invoked what I would call a devious plan, to be honest, using permitted development rights of Thames Water to allow construction traffic to come through the town to do a drainage diversion project. In my opinion, this should not be allowed. Waverley are the landowner here, we're the partner with Chris Nicholson and we should say to them, we're not having it, we're not going to allow this to happen. It will do Waverley's reputation considerable damage in Farnham if this is allowed to happen. The reason given by Mr MacArthur was rather curious. He actually said that the bridge would interfere with the drainage project itself. Now, they are the designer of the bridge, so they could have designed the bridge so it didn't do that. The other point I'd make is that this drainage project actually finishes up well down the construction project. Before you do it, you've got to do all sorts of other things. You've got to board up the site, you've got to dig trenches to do the, I forget the word that I'm looking for, what's the word where you do the, dig trenches to find what's underneath them and so on. Anyway, I'll just leave that with, sorry? No, that wasn't the word I was looking for. Anyway, I'll now move on to the main project actually. My concern about the main project is that it's just not going to work and it's wrong for Farnham. The market has actually told you this, Chris Nicholson has been trying to get funding for this project for six years since they got planning permission. They haven't been able to achieve that from any commercial market investor. The current investment market is actually awash with money. People are looking for good things to put their money into. It's not easy to find good returns with low interest rates and they'd bite your hand off if the project was going to give a good return. They've had to turn to Surrey County Council because they're up against a deadline now to do with the CPO project and I don't believe it's at all sensible for a council like Surrey to go into this market. I don't think, if commercial investors are not prepared to do it, it seems to be highly risky and wrong for Surrey to do it. The second thing, the reason where I think the market's telling you, if you look at the fly-through, what you see is a whole load, you go down a very narrow alley and you see a whole load of fashion shops on either side. Now, these fashion shops are actually not the sort of shops that are going to go into this scheme. It's not the right place for them, it's not the right environment. They will want to be in the proper part of Farnham in the main shopping centre where there's four hundred and twenty thousand space of retail. They won't want to be in this relatively small scheme with ten thousand space of retail.
And I ask you to-
I'm running out of time, Leader, so I'll perhaps try and say a little bit more in the exempt session. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor MacLeod. In sort of no particular order, because there was quite a lot for me to note, I'll come back on some of the points that you've made. In terms of Surrey County Council as the funder, clearly Surrey County Council carried out due diligence on this. They see it as a regeneration scheme and let's be clear, they see it as a regeneration scheme but also this enables them to have an income stream for a number of years as well. So from that point of view, it's an income stream for both councils. Let's be very clear on that. You talk about the fact that you see it as separating from the existing town of Farnham, but in terms of the plans and the proposal before us, and let me remind you that we're not at a planning meeting here, we're here as landowner to look at the proposed changes to the development agreement. What I would say is that part of the proposed scheme actually is aimed at joining the two parts of the town together, the existing town and with the pedestrianisation and the other aspects, the new part. So that's been identified already as being a very flexible design and that's what's I don't propose to get into sort of a lot of detail about Crest and a lot of the questions that you had the opportunity to ask last night, but I hope that that just helps to clarify some of those points for you. Thank you. Councillor Seaborn, thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Today's deliberations are over whether Waverley accepts alterations to the Brightwells redevelopment and moves ahead with the scheme. Two aspects of the scheme that need to be taken into consideration in deciding on approving these changes are the regeneration component and the commercial component. I visit Farnham regularly, having spent time wandering around the neglected and rundown part of the town that is under consideration, both by myself and with fellow councillors. Whilst I have sympathy for objections in relation to specific details, I'm amazed that any resident or group of residents would want to block an overall regeneration scheme that will broaden the heart of the town, add much-needed housing, including a significant affordable component, and introduce big-name commercial vendors to boost the economy of the town. On the commercial side, firstly, I'm really concerned that large quantities of residents' funds are already locked into this scheme through the land assembly process. We need to move forward so that those funds are put to work. Moving on, we're being asked to accept the change in minimum land value that has occurred since the development agreement was signed. So can I ask the executive to confirm my very simple understanding that based on the time value of money, it is entirely to be expected that having moved from a higher interest world pre-recession to the low interest world of today, the steady and significant cash flows arising from later in the life of the project take on much more significance and therefore maintain a good, healthy, positive return for Waverley, even though the change in assessed land value reduces the upfront payment made to the council as described in part one of item seventy-two on page twenty of our papers. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Seaborn, thank you. I think you've summed it up exceptionally well. And yes, in a word, the answer to your question. I have councillor Gordon Smith down. Not here? Okay. And moving to councillor Hill.
Leader, thank you very much. So I'm one of the ward members for Brightwells and so I'm taking, I've taken a very considerable interest in this project over many, many years. And in fact, I've lived in the town for twenty-five and I've watched this area go from being quite a lively area to be an underutilised and derelict part of Farnham and in fact an embarrassment. And I'm really, really looking forward to seeing the improvements that the redevelopment scheme is going to bring. And I was going to, there's quite a few things I was going to mention but have been mentioned by others, but I think that particularly for me, and I mean I've been in the licence trade for forty years and I'm really, really interested in the proposed restaurants. I think it's a very positive sign that several well-known restaurant chains have had the confidence to sign up for the scheme. Eating Out is a real growth market and a few clicks on my computer this afternoon revealed sales growth in the restaurant business of eleven per cent last month alone. And maybe I shouldn't have retired. But Eating Out is expected to be a fifty-seven billion pound market next year and I very much hope that it will continue to grow and that Farnham will have its share of this boom market. I'm not surprised there's been some controversy about the scheme. I mean, it is a large development, but I think it's going to do a lot of good for the town and for Waverley and indeed for Surrey. My question tonight really is that I'm concerned that residents, particularly some of the newer residents to Farnham, are not really aware of what's going on here and I would very much like to see some communication with residents and I don't know if there's a plan for this or not. And also, I think some sort of ongoing communication as the development progresses would be quite a good idea. Perhaps you could kindly help with that.
Councillor Hill, thank you. And great news that the restaurant business really is such a growth market. Again, that's what we want to see and for many of us who live in Farnham, I think you'll know that unless you've booked a table at a restaurant in Farnham, trying to get a table on a Thursday, Friday or Saturday evening is incredibly difficult. So I think that shows that, yes, there is most definitely a market for further restaurants. Two points that you've made, you've talked about communication and we've been working with the developer and we will continue to do so in terms of actually formulating and delivering a really robust communications plan. I know the Farnham Herald ran an article last week and there's been an awful lot that's been on social media as well and social media is an excellent way to really engage with a lot of our younger residents and as you say, quite a lot of younger residents who may not know very much about the scheme and also a lot of those who perhaps commute rather to London or wherever. So again, are very challenged in terms of time to sort of engage at local level perhaps. So we will continue to grow and develop the social media aspect. We have a number of other media interviews that are set up and one of the other things that we will be doing as well is actually making sure that we, quite a few of the councillors as well as the communications team and some of the officers, will actually be out in Farnham making sure that we get the message across with two residents at a lot of the key times. So that will be happening as well over the period of the next few weeks, obviously dependent on the vote and the decision by members this evening. Now, you also mentioned perhaps ongoing communication and that's something, we're looking at different ways to try and sort of engage with people and make sure that we're continually keeping them updated. We have our own internal magazine but we're also looking at other ways to get the news and to keep the news out there as well, as I say, dependent on the vote and the decision by members tonight. Something else that we'll be doing and we plan to do if the decision is made tonight to proceed and that is that working with the developer, there'll be a stakeholder group set up within Farnham and we'll be inviting a number of sort of ward councillors and some of the key stakeholders to be involved in that so that, again, we get people's views and we can look at making sure that we're getting the right messages across and communicating in the right way with people. Because obviously, given the wide demographic, we want to make sure that we reach as many people and as many of our residents, not just in Farnham but within Waverley as we can with this project. I hope that helps. And the next speaker I have is councillor Isherwood.
Thank you, Leader. One of my questions, you've already answered very comprehensively and that was to councillor Ramsdale. Really, I'd like confirmation of the move of the day centre from the Gostrey Centre, which quite honestly is hardly fit for purpose in this day and age. So the move to the Memorial Hall, I trust is going to be a seamless operation to a bigger, better property, but I would just like confirmation that it will be seamless at all.
Thank you councillor Isherwood. Yes, we're working very closely with the trustees of the Gostrey Centre. We now have all the tenders in for the Memorial Hall and for the work there. As you say, we will be delivering a far superior, bigger, better health and wellbeing community centre, which will deliver far more comprehensive services than any centre that was proposed initially, you know, within the scheme as such. So the Gostrey Centre trustees are communicated with and we keep in regular contact with them. Councillor Else works very closely with them in her former role but also now as portfolio holder for services to older people and her health and wellbeing portfolio and we're working to ensure that, as I say, there is a seamless transition to the new building. I have councillor Williamson next.
Thank you very much, Leader. I have a number of questions which will go into exempt in both the legal and the financial section, so I'll avoid that completely. Much of last night's members' meeting was quite rightly discussing the legal risks versus the financial benefits. That's what we should be considering. The discussion from some of the councillors last night, I've got to say, reminded me a bit of a game of poker. We've been advised that there's every likelihood that we have a losing hand and then we've been advised on how to play the cards should Waverley Borough Council think that that's in its interest to do so. We're then advised how to minimise our stake and finally how to make excuses if we lost the game. This is a bit of a cheeky question, but considering the council's legal advice, I won't refer to what it was, I'd ask the officers, in particular the borough solicitor, if he were using his own money rather than that of the taxpayers' money, would he spend it on defending such a decision, given the respective probabilities of winning or losing the legal challenge? I'll put that to one side, you don't need to answer it, but I've got to say, it's quite easy in these situations to get wrapped up in the legal intricacies and forget the basics of the scheme. I read in the papers and the expert advice from the council and the GVA and the references to considerable amenity values to the people of Farnham that the scheme would provide. I can only assume that they have not spoken to the same cross-section of people I have in Farnham. The only residents, and I mean the only residents I seem to have spoken to who support it are also Waverley councillors. I remind members that the original planning application, in the original application, five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three residents opposed the application whilst only twenty-seven supported it. This despite the fact that this council produced a brochure of eighteen thousand, distributed it around the district, encouraging residents to support the scheme. The other reason which was heavily promoted last night at the members' briefing was the financial benefit- the financial benefits such a scheme would bring to Waverley and that needed to be weighed against the possibility of losing any judicial review. I've got to say, after 40 years in business, if this is a good deal or even an acceptable deal, I'd like to see what a bad deal looks like. A quarter of prime town centre site is being given away for practically nothing. The fundamental problem is that this development has become a matter of political face-saving and the merits and the disadvantages are being lost in attempts to push through what may, just come what may. No-one disputes that the site needs development, it's just that this scheme was outdated and inappropriate for the centre of Farnham even when it was initially proposed. The problem it generates have just been brushed under the carpet in the hope that they will go away, unfortunately haven't. Despite all the concessions that have been made at this council, over the years, amounting to many millions of pounds, commercial funding could still not be found. I mean, the very fact...
councillor Williamson, can I remind you kindly that you're out of time?
Already. I'll perhaps go right in exempt.
So, taking on board your comments, I think it's important to just reiterate that Waverley did consult on the scheme with the public and in actual fact, 70% of the respondents from Farnham were actually supportive and pro the scheme, so I'm not quite sure where all your figures have come from, but those are the figures that we have. And I know you talk about a number of people that you've spoken to who are not supportive of the scheme. I'm not going to get into a great big argument on that, what I would say is that I think the posts and the emails that a lot of us have had, posts on social media that have been very, very visible the last few days, even the posts on the Farnham Herald's own website, as well as a number of us who have received very, very positive emails from people within Farnham, show that actually there is a lot of support there for this scheme and people want to see us move on and get on with it. I would also remind everyone here that Waverley are not giving away, as you've stated, anything, far from it. As I said earlier, this scheme and the financial appraisal has been fully endorsed by GVA and as such, we are receiving best value and best consideration for this financial appraisal. Thank you.
councillor John Gray.
Thank you leader. As a member not having any previous experience of this project, I wanted to compliment officers and executives for reaching this position and also for explaining the risks and opportunities so clearly. But I have a question and that is, I wanted assurance that the scheme will be disabled-friendly and that the minimum of nine disabled spaces will be reviewed at some point. Quite a lot of emphasis was put on the fact that there are other car parks and people can walk there, but that's not open to people with a disability, so would you consider that and also assure me that it will be disabled-friendly?
Thank you councillor Gray. Yes, just to reassure you, the scheme is DDA compliant, Crest themselves have an excellent record of working in this area and I'm sure that if, as we move forward, there are any other sort of alterations that we can think that would improve, certainly things like parking even further, then, you know, hopefully, we can actually talk to them about that. But yes, they are very conscious of that, clearly we want everyone using that area and using all the facilities there, but I can assure you that that has been borne in mind and as such. Thank you.
We'll now move to the executive and any comments from executive members before we move into exempt. councillor King.
Thank you very much indeed leader. Been a very interesting discussion so far. As portfolio holder for housing, I really welcome the mix of proposed housing development on this really exciting site in Farnham. Since 2011, the housing associations have been required to deliver new affordable rented homes, let us up to 80% of open market rents. In the Waverley area, this frequently means that they are not affordable for households on local incomes. This situation is going to be exacerbated by the introduction of universal credits and the introduction of the benefit cap, which will make affordable rents increasingly unaffordable for households in receipt of these benefits. The council considered whether it could purchase the rented element of the housing provision and deliver homes for social rent. Unfortunately, this would not have generated sufficient capital receipt to make the housing scheme at all viable. The gross annual pay, and this is a published figure, for people actually working in Waverley is £26,300 per annum. Shared ownership enables local Farnham people to get on the ladder of home ownership and buy a stake, which is typically 45% of the home, in their local community. 26% of our housing register applicants actually live in Farnham, the majority of whom need one and two-bedroomed accommodation. Shared ownership requires an income in the region of £23,500, so I leave it to you to do the maths, and a deposit of less than £5,000, which is comparable to the income required to pay an affordable rent without any housing benefit. Shared ownership provides the opportunity to deliver affordable homes for key workers in line with our economic strategy. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Farnham residents in housing need to get on the housing ladder in an exciting and modern development in a wonderful location in the centre of Farnham. Thank you.
councillor King, thank you. I think you've summed it up very well and the fact that the shared ownership is really achievable, I think is really refreshing for us all to see and the plans in terms of how Waverley will really work with the housing provider to actually make sure that they market that and we have local homes owned by local people is equally as exciting and that's what we need to bear in mind because at the moment we do have a lot of people who tend to leave the town, go to university and for various reasons can't really afford to come back until they're sort of in their sort of 40s and we want to make sure that, as I said earlier, we keep people within our town and we maximise the economic growth there.
Thank you. councillor Hall.
Thank you leader. Members, as portfolio holder for finance, I'd like to say a few words about the economic and financial benefits of the scheme. The local economy in Farnham will be given a much-needed boost with the addition of over 200 homes and a complex of shops and restaurants from some of our most reputable retailers, with the whole area sporting a Spartanew Square and landscaping green spaces. In addition to this, the development provides over 400 new jobs in Farnham. This puts money into the pockets of local people, increases spending and boosts commerce in the town, but most importantly, provides the opportunity, training and sustainable incomes for the residents of Farnham, not just in the short term but for years to come. The section 106 money will be used for improving services within the community. Traffic reduction gets £100,000, parking £275,000, leisure £300,000, the park £475,000 and education a massive £700,000. The local economy is a clear winner with this development in all areas, investment, economy, jobs and housing. But as for the council, does the development make sense? After all, it's often said that there's no such thing as a free lunch. Some members have asked, what's the cost to the council and how is it being paid for? Members, let me give you the figures from the point of view of Waverley. The capital cost of the scheme is approximately £8.5 million, but the capital and other revenues for the first six years are in excess of £12 million, so in the first six years our estimated return is approximately £3.7 million. And subsequently to that, every year, we expect an annual income of between £700,000 and £900,000. Members, to put this into perspective, this is the equivalent of approximately £20 million with a FTSE 100 index stock, or £35 million of 30-year government gilts, or £88 million of five-year government gilts, which yield just 93 basis points. For Waverley, this investment not only helps regenerate large parts of Farnham economically and socially, provides much-needed housing and entertainment facilities, ensures long-term local employment opportunities, but also provides an income stream for years to come which can be spent on vital services within our community. Members, Brightwell's redevelopment scheme makes a positive contribution to housing, employment, commerce, leisure, education, green spaces, all within Farnham, and all this whilst adding to the financial resources available for services provided by Waverley Borough Council. The recommendations are before you for consideration, members.
Thank you councillor Hall. I think you've summed that up extremely well. Moving on councillor Edwards, you wanted to speak.
Thank you leader. We have before us today an opportunity to ensure the regeneration of the major town in our borough. In my view, and it appears that of the younger residents in Farnham, who tend to agree with me, that the benefits of the proposal far outweigh other considerations. It will halt the neglect suffered over many years in the area. It will provide health and wellbeing benefits to our vulnerable residents. The area will be revitalised and for residents and for commerce. It will offer affordable housing to those young people in most need. It will offer employment on a short-term and long-term basis. It will encourage visitors from outside the borough. It will provide a much-needed boost to Waverley's revenue stream. It will help make Farnham a town fit for the 21st century. I have no hesitation in recommending this proposal. Thank you.
councillor Edwards, thank you. Any other speakers before I move into exempt? Right, councillor Bolton and then councillor Else.
Thank you chairman. Before I was elected to the, I must thank all my colleagues for summarising many of the points that I wanted to make. Before I was elected to the council last year, I had no knowledge of the Brightwells development in Farnham. As a newly-elected councillor, I had no predispositions and certainly no predetermined views about Brightwells. However, the more I have read and heard, especially now that I'm an executive member, the more disposed I have come to the Brightwells regeneration scheme in Farnham. I have received correspondence from residents which has helped to confirm my conclusions. Councils and those making decisions are often opposed by pressure groups who appear capable, have time on their hands and have strongly-held views. There are others, perhaps younger, who support the development, people who would like more affordable homes, people who would like jobs, people who would like to use the range of leisure facilities the scheme will provide. I believe the scheme will revitalise Brightwells and make the area an attractive place to visit and to live. In the long term, the benefits far outweigh any current uncertainties and I think we should agree to the recommendations. Thank you chairman.
councillor Bolton, thank you. I think you've summed it up well in terms of the, almost the silent majority and I know a number of us have received emails and other correspondence from a lot of the younger people in Farnham, many of whom weren't even aware that this was being proposed and who have and are very supportive, so thank you for speaking for them this evening as well. councillor Else and then councillor Martin.
Thank you leader. Well, last night I received an email and I think most of us did, from a Farnham resident who said that he was very excited about the prospect of the development of East Street and he described his feelings about it. He was worried about the vociferous minority and assured me that there was much support for the development among the residents of Farnham. In fact, he said he didn't know a single person who was against the development amongst his friendship group, which he says comprised mostly busy young professionals, students, parents with young children. He was concerned that most councillors will be very familiar with the views that the vociferous minority, as he described it, who opposed the scheme, put forward, but we may not have heard the views of the rest of the community who are in favour. Just get on and build the thing is a surprisingly common statement, he tells me. Well, I've heard that many times too. I often hear from other people, young and old, who are very much in favour, but their views are put to me in a very reasonable and measured way, not necessarily publicly. One of the complaints voiced by some who are against the regeneration of East Street is that this decision is going to be made by a large contingency of councillors who don't live in Farnham. Well, it is a fact that it's not only Farnham that will gain from this development. There will be benefits for the community of Farnham, but there will also be benefits for the residents across Waverley as a whole and most certainly, in this time of financial cutbacks and caution, there will be benefits for the economy of Waverley. I'm not a Farnham resident, but I do have family members and friends who live in Farnham and the idea of this scheme is met with approval and impatience to get on with it from them all. The village I live is five miles from Farnham and many of my contemporaries there are also keen to see it come to fruition. We shall all be going to Farnham. Godming ought to be worried. One of my special interests is social and recreational services provided for the community in general and older people in particular. So I have witnessed in the past the huge benefits can arise, which can arise from the creation of centres for the community, which encompass the many different needs and aspirations of the community under one roof. The extension and refurbishment of the Memorial Hall is an amazing doorway to offer multi-generational opportunities par excellence. The relocation of the Gostrey Centre is something to be met with enthusiasm, as I know the Gostrey Centre management are doing. This will be a centre which will incorporate a health and wellbeing component, it will be bigger and better than we could ever otherwise have provided and I have every confidence that the new centre will have the ability to meet many of the existing community needs and requirements, as well as those yet to be identified. In particular, I'm greatly looking forward to working with the people of Farnham and I find this a very exhilarating prospect. There is always more than one view presented on any initiative or proposal put forward by a local authority, that is what we expect and that is how it should be, but we have to find a balance. We must make decisions for the greater good and I am now inclined to believe that to go ahead with this scheme will be for the greater good. Thank you leader.
councillor Else, thank you. councillor Martin.
£700,000 to £900,000 revenue in addition to the significant capital payment of £5.9 million. This alone makes this scheme value for money, as acknowledged by our valuers at GVA. In the current market, a capital sum of many millions would be needed to achieve that sort of return and we've already heard from councillor Hall about that. this. Increasingly at budget time each year, we are told how difficult local government finances are, and this council is no exception. The ongoing revenue this scheme provides will be a huge benefit to the Waverley council taxpayer, each and every one of them. Aside from the economic benefits to the people of Farnham and the wider Waverley, there is also significant community benefit. We have heard about several hundred full-time equivalent jobs, more if you factor in the part-time, not to mention the construction jobs that will be available. There is also the enhanced commercial offering for young and older like. I, like many of you, have received various communications from local Farnham residents saying how much they are looking forward to this new development, including many parents of young children such as myself. There is also the provision of much-needed housing in a sustainable location of the sort that is absolutely sought. Affordable housing, as well as dearer, perhaps more luxurious, housing will be offered, enhancing the vibrancy of this scheme, and ensuring that it remains a vibrant hub in the town. I think this is the right development, at the right time, offering the right community benefits, as well as being excellent value for money, and I hope fellow executive members will support the recommendations before them. This council should be in the business of doing and not just talking for the benefit of its residents, and this scheme does just that.
Thank you councillor Martin. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you. I'm very conscious I don't want to repeat. A lot of the comments have been made, and councillor Martin has just actually taken some of my thunder. But I'll go right back to the beginning of the evening and to the finance director, Mr Clark. One of the things, first things he said was, from GVA, the proposed land payment is appropriate. And I wrote that down, and I think that's a very, very important point. But the jobs, you know, it's 430 post-construction jobs, roughly 400 during the construction, so there's a two-phased employment scheme here. The income generation, the car parks, something dear to my heart recently, you know, the income, the improvements and everything else, we would have to find the money to do a lot of that work for the future. So, I think that's much needed. I clearly don't play poker, because I didn't understand any of what was said previously about the last night's meeting, so I don't play poker. I didn't know about this scheme before coming to the council, my colleague to my right. It has been an eye-opener. I am immensely grateful to the people who have prepared the reports, how balanced they are, so you can come to a conclusion based on facts, and, you know, whatever the result, I am immensely grateful for their hard work and commitment to give us that balanced information. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dinas. Yes, it's not just a new dogfight car park. Obviously, we're going to be seeing a lot of work going on to refurbish and ensure that we have a really superior car park in the South Street car park as well, which I think we'd all agree is possibly long overdue. But again, a really good opportunity as investors save for income generation for the council. Right, if that concludes all the speakers in open, would members now like to move into closed exempt session, so that we can answer any of your questions that you may have, and then I'll invite the members of the public back for the actual vote? So, conclusion with, where do I say it? So...
Thank you, Mr Hyman.
Mr Hyman, I'm trying to speak, please. Colleagues. Right, so we move to the exclusion of the press and public. So, pursuant to procedural Rule 20, and in accordance with Section 100a (brackets for, close brackets) of the Local Government Act 1972, that the press and public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following items, on the grounds that it is likely, in view of the nature of the business to be transacted or the nature of the proceedings, that if members of the public were present during these items, there would be disclosure to them of exempt information, as defined by Section 1001 of the Act, of the description specified at the meeting in the revised Part 1 of Schedule 12a to the Local Government Act 1972. Colleagues, are you agreed that we move into exempt?
Agreed.
Thank you.